Elizabeth Benhausen.
There we go. I don't necessarily have chair rules. This will be my final meeting, chair of this committee is it to begin, sorry, change to a standing committee. Most of you don't know me personally or my personal philosophy about government, but I'm not a fan of government. And the thing that I hold most fear in my heart in any meeting that I run is for revenue. Literally, I believe that sitting in three-hour meetings is horrible for your health. The passion. So I ask you for comments to be short, poignant, and meaningful. And don't keep repeating the same old things that it means to keep it here. It's unhealthy. If that makes you uncomfortable, I'm sorry. But my whole mindset is to move meetings along to make government more efficient. You can bud the hot girls now of the New York Mets. Say you can take away a man's money and you can take away a man's money. But you can take away a man's time and you can take away his life. And with that, we will begin the meeting with a community, uh, committee member of the board. Anybody? Not.
Um, so you reference the changing of this commission to a committee? Or are we gonna really?
Yeah.
Um, do we need to know about that?
I'm trying to find out if we need to know about that in our meeting, but we're all becoming more connected to the committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause that is, yeah, that is something that I always want to know.
Yeah, I'm just throwing that out there because if that can't really hear who you are. Somebody else got anything? No, all right. President of the committee, John, I think he should be being kidnapped here.
That's correct. So if it's been on this time on ranch, the rains were busting in line for the ranch. So the number amount to the, the, the meetings been quite substantial. And, and also in relationship to, uh, due to rain, which was a little bit of, you know, we lost, we were going to determine the loss of the crop seedings, so the monitoring. Too much moisture and caused, and I can't pronounce the fungus name, but like I said, bubba. That we're having to destroy them and actually sterilize the area there because no one wants to spread it to ranch. So that was, uh, that was a piece of news this week. Things are busy on ranch and as I mentioned, the meeting, we eagerly anticipated finding a cool wood boardwalk extension and couches. And, um, and that's it.
Oh, did you question John? Hold on. I don't necessarily date closely on everybody, but I don't know. Basically from the last planning or?
Yeah, not from the last plan. These were seedlings that were in the greenhouse and.
Like the greenhouse, okay.
Oh, no, in the little pots.
Okay, thanks. And who discovered that?
Well, we have a couple of volunteers who regularly tend those seeds in the greenhouse. And, uh, and there was some evidence, uh, of a tree kind of grouping of a little seed was grouping over. And so there was a forensic exercise that actually involved pairs, P E A R S group, to determine that this is particular fungus was indeed invasive with the crop of seedlings. And there you have it.
Fascinating. All right. Anybody else for John? Perfect. Not.
I think you have a member of the public that is zooming in, which is the Bradby and Laura's squad.
Uh, good morning. I just wanted to report, we're listening on, uh, on Zoom. There's an echo chamber effect. It's impossible to hear or understand what anybody is saying. It's like, you know, echo chamber is the right word. So I don't know what you can do about that, but it's very hard to understand what anybody is saying. Thank you.
I think that these are the new, new, new people. A lot going on with the speed. Um, first off, I would like to thank the community. Last thing we are just setting up is we're in a music company art contest. And so that was a lot of fun. We want to thank Timo, we're in a music company. They're going through the different submissions for art and then all of those funds that are raised are going to projects. I might take a deep breath because there has been so many moving parts to the skate park. We are currently in force working with the county. Um, we'll be meeting with Ray next week, David Clark and myself, just to get up to speed in the things that actually are everything situated for the county. Um, we're in very good condition with all of the reports. We've also gone out to CEQA, which of course is, uh, now where we pass through an environmental impact. So it's a very, very critical point with park to be able to get through CEQA and understanding that we are a go in that entire area. We have three grants out on the table right now. Of course, the most important one being with OCal. Uh, that's a match grant at six hundred thousand dollars on a 1.2 million dollar project. We of course matched that grant to, um, all of the terms of C C D S D in order for them to approve or to approve or to submit that grant. So it is currently in review. It is a highly competitive process. Um, but we are very, very hopeful with this grant. Um, what that does mean is that we currently hold in our care and a combination of a memorandum of understanding with the district, pledges, private donations, and grants roughly six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to our name. So we could not have submitted that grant with OCal without the match in our care. Um, and I just want to remind the public and everyone here that at the end of the day, the district's responsibility to this project is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars on 1.2 million and state Cambria and CCC, David Clark is with us today. Um, and all those in the public and our exterior areas that have supported the project will be what's paying for the 1.2 million. So I say that to, to really relieve you as this is not taxpay money. This is hard work to be able to run an infrastructure to this community for our children. And I, I just really want to say thank you because it's a tremendous effort. We've been in this for the three years. And we know we have every bit of two years to go by what is truth in regards to the reviews of the applications with grants. I do want to mention the other two grants besides OCal's. We have a grant sitting with the Queen Hawk Foundation, which is what they call the state park project. And we don't know exactly what that grant dollar amount may be. Could be anywhere from ten thousand to a hundred thousand, but their board is set to review that right around September, October. And we also have a third grant that is looked at with Cambria Tourism. It has been a third submission and will be potentially at another August meeting. So I'd like to share with you to please thank to attend that August meeting with Cambria Tourism because I'd like your support to be able to secure some funds for emphasis structure to offset the district's responsibility, which indirectly is your responsibility in reducing that investment. I hope that makes sense. Um, so that is where the skate park is as far as fundraising, as far as events. Uh, we were part of the big skate event down in Venice. V V, one of our reps competed, um, did it extremely well and we're very heavily endorsed by industry. So the state camp area is very well known in the skating space. And, uh, they're super excited to see this part get built and then put it in place. Um, I'm always open for questions and we're easy to reach, the entire state of Cambria team. So skate cambria.com. We'll keep you updated and every dollar counts. So I'm going to address two of the initiatives in the brick, which will eventually be going into the retaining wall. Please reach out to me, uh, juliet@statecambria.com. And again, thank you very much for the continued support. We're super excited with the relationship with the district, a big shout out to Cambria Community Council for their continued support as our dislocation. That's it.
Any questions for Julie? Well, hey, I have one question. For the current hour and.
So when we started, it was right around March of two thousand and twenty, when the other park was taken out where it's currently located. And I would say where we are today is in a great position. I mean, these things take time to see each point. A lot of government, I wish we had less. I'm often asked the question, why is it taking so long? Um, we're doing this the right way and that is engineering, elevation, soil, sound, bathrooms, setbacks, sideways. I can keep going. Um, so and as to when it might be ready, I think that was the last part, like the timeline. We're hoping we can go out to our F P for bid early part of next year. Um, a lot of that depends on the grant, our commitment with the district because we can't go out to our F P's. This is a memorandum of understanding. And so we have the funds. And that would mean a grant commitment on the other half. So we're working as quickly as we can. Um, that's the best answer I can give you because it's the honest answer. Yeah, a pleasure.
Any other questions for Julie? Okay, any suggestions for the public comment on the agenda? All start with a written comment. What's that? Not on the agenda. And here is a comment that is not on the agenda. Linda, for the end test writes, please consider allowing a hundred building permits of Sabo water meter number one to one hundred. And instead of the water, you can evaluate your period thereafter to decide whether to eat the more current now and back. Thank you, Linda. Any other questions or comments not on the agenda? From that being not a package.
Don Hal raises his hand.
Uh, thank you. Just wanted to let you know that the audio is still almost impossible to understand. Uh, Haley, you might want to see if you have echo cancellation turned off with the Zoom.
If I, is this black?
It's, isn't. Yeah, it's. Yeah, it's.
And, uh, if you can have both of the ones in the way in here that it is getting even sound.
You can set that one down for you. Yeah, yeah.
Nobody else, nobody else on Zoom in addition to Haley, correct?
I know there's people on Zoom.
No, 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 I mean, like in.
Okay, the facilities and resources and reportedly we don't have a new guy here. I was kind of hoping, oh, he is.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Uh, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. David Geary, who was our new facilities and resource manager. Um, we're super excited to have him. He's on day two. He's got a full plate on day two. So, um, he did quite a bit of a tour yesterday, uh, met up with staff, um, a lot of new hire paperwork, things that in nature we've got to get set up on a computer, email. Uh, our shared drives it. And so he, he's coming in sprinting. So speaking. David, go ahead and introduce yourself. Tell a little bit about yourself.
David Geary, um, like I said, uh, we need to still leave that. Um, and then it's, you know, it's going to be, yeah, like it's, it's a mad app right now. Trying to get it thought of and where everybody's at, where they, where the, uh, that's the idea is, you know, what needs to be done. And, uh, does need to be done. Uh, so we're going through right now. It's just going over where the rack. And if you're ever all on the same page, bro, go over the right, right, right.
David has a extensive background in facilities and resources and a couple of different school districts to the north of us, King City and Solid Ave, manage transportation, it's a decent mechanic. Uh, so he's, he's well versed in various different areas, very versatile. So we're excited to have him.
Well, welcome to the community. I'm excited to have you. Uh, if there are more jobs that I would like to have and was a part of, I do, and we do, uh, I think that it is the most interesting, you know, having power to paint in this, in this town with what I mean. So I don't mind any, uh, any difficult comment and scare you away eventually, you're gonna like. My difficulty to help this is a little bit of resources, maybe going on where, where your, uh, city ministry, month or a couple of weeks to keep everyone pretty informed, I think. So.
Yeah, uh, not, not a lot. I mean, we're, we're struggling. Staffing wise, um, you know, there's a lot on the play as Mr. Nixon stated in the ranch with, with heavy rains and tree maintenance in addition to other district facilities. I mean, that, that department is struggling, uh, resource wise. So, uh, the good thing is Dave's coming in with a fresh set of eyes. Um, with some creative ideas for how we can be a little more efficient in that department. So our book is, is that kind of as you get a fresh set of eyes on that and maybe we can increase some efficiencies and do a better job.
Yeah, and I'll just go ahead and add a comment to, just in regards to the vast, all of a sudden, I was on a committee meeting with John and and just to let everybody know that there was a lot of brain power trying to figure out what the, how the man did this particular visibility. And it is trouble though. There, there's not an answer necessarily out there. And we as a community really kind of come together and bond and figure out what we're going to do with just this particular, you know.
Yeah. And that was brought up yesterday at finance committee as well. So kind of looking at it from a couple of different perspectives, from pros, from finance. So we're, we're on our way.
And would this be the time for you to address the change from the standing or from the commission to the standing?
I can touch base on it.
Yeah.
Um, so on August tenth, we are having, um, our, our board meeting. And, uh, on the regular business, item six A will be the discussion and consideration of adopting the ordinance. Repealing chapter seven point zero eight, which is essentially changing the board standing committee bylaws, repealing the commission bylaws and, and creating a committee. Um, it is my understanding that when that does occur, um, we will be looking at the current construction of the commission and then those that wish to stay I believe will be appointed on the committee and then we'll have a board member appointed to that committee. The advantage to changing from a, uh, commission to a committee. Um, the thought is that we're going to be able to appoint a board member that can guide, um, and then have a, a better connection with the commission, um, because that board member will be in on every meeting will be guiding the discussions and then bringing that back to the board. So it, it involves the board a little more.
What?
I don't know where we are on the agenda.
Well, I'm pretty ill, you know. Because it's just, I, I, I don't want to leave the meeting. I kind of agree that we would be better guided by a board member being on this committee giving us a little more direction and us to attend the fighting. But I don't want to completely just stuff me right now because I'd rather you go to a three-hour board meeting on August ten.
My opinion is that this whole action is, uh, quite premature and forward going out and then there are listed at least fifty-one that I can call that that need to be handed to the press or not recording anything. I had one thing to look at, a matter of taste that is, is proven and has been there using the pants around it and not happening. I don't want to see all of the work on this mission over the past year sitting on a, on a. We. And, and. You have, this is from a, from a minute. It's probably have a board in there.
Uh, you don't have to take minutes, put an agenda, I'm just saying, consider that as opposed to standing committee.
Okay, August tenth is calling. Here we go. Uh, so the consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from July?
I move. I got a first, it's a hermit second, so in favor say aye. Aye, pass. Here we go. Regular business.
Uh, discuss the funds allocated to parks and recreation and open space. Who wants to touch that? Is that about the money that we think we have there?
So we are reallocating the roughly nineteen thousand minus three thousand um, to go to projects that we identify. And is it premature to do that in this meeting when we are looking at being reorganized? Will anything that we do?
Yeah, that's my problem.
Um, poor people. Well, anything that we do in this meeting follows into the next organization.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I guess so. Cause you're the only one who knows.
I, I believe I would definitely hold on those, to those type, those plans, uh, wait for the arrival of the chair. And then I believe that you potentially can bring that forward to the board. Um, those, those funds have been there. I know that they, you know, Julie and I talked about it quite a bit, how the intent for those funds has changed a bit over the years and those funds kind of just keep getting rolled over. So if there's a sound plan to use those funds, the board's really big on a sound plan, a well-thought-out plan on how to use those funds and how those, uh, any of those plans will impact um, the district. So, uh, I, I don't think it's necessarily negative. It may slow it up a little bit depending on, on the chair and, and where the committee guides it. But I don't think it necessarily throws a wrench in it. It would throw a wrench in it if you're going to spend it tomorrow. If that makes sense.
And I have an idea for how to spend it tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I mean, not much of it. Um, but we already have. So we, we talk about creating fields on the east ranch. Um, but we already have fields on the east ranch. They exist. Um, the only thing that needs to be done so that people could actually start using those fields on the east ranch is to grade them and mow them a little bit more aggressively. Two things. Um, it would be nice if as this group could purchase maybe some soccer backstops. Um, you know, just temporary things that can be shoved to the side. Um, and that we could spend a little time promoting the idea of using the fields that currently exist on the east ranch. Um, so I mean, this is really inexpensive and actually, um, the perception of what we are doing here as this group would be greatly enhanced if we could push this, something like this through.
Absolutely. And, and just to clarify, um, I believe I have to remember what the exact title of what those funds were dedicated for in this most recent budget. But if anything escapes that title or that purpose, it has to go before the board in, in a budget adjustment. And so that can be done. We, we have two board meetings, the agendas, uh, we have another agenda review this, this week. I don't know how well prepared you would be to bring that before the board. Um, but you potentially could target August seventeenth, uh, depending how quickly and, and the, the outcome of the tent.
It's not a, the only thing that I guess I would have to work with our new facilities managers to identify the cost and the frequency of grading. Um, and then obviously the costs and frequency of mowings. You would have to mow it a little bit more frequently and a little tighter than the rest of the that giant field. And we don't have to do any, but currently there's designated two soccer-sized fields. And we're even just talking about mowing one. And it gives people the opportunity to play soccer, to throw a ball, to play frisbee, like endless things. Just to have something like I walk my dogs there. I would throw a ball for my dog, but you can't walk out on all the stickers and then the gopher rolls. So, um, I think it's such a simple project.
And I think it's a good idea. And I think it just has to be packaged really well and brought forward to the board, whether that happens before it turns into to a committee. I, I don't know, but, um, it would just simply has to go before the board at full budget adjustment with their approval. And I think if they're well informed and there's a well-thought-out plan that would not be impossible.
So then what does this group think about me putting together a proposal with a budget, working with the new facilities manager? Um, and asking for a cost adjustment on that?
I move that we do so.
Okay.
And I want to ask them, and I don't want to belabor this, but I'm gonna right now. What stops me from taking two portable goals out there on that field and setting them there right now?
Nothing, nothing.
Hold on, hold on. I was asking the professionals. Mr. McElany, can I do that?
Say that one more time.
Can I, can I take two portable goals, professional size, big, and take them out on that field and set them there and use them? I can go out there and fly a kite, right? I can run around and fly a kite. I can go out there with my kids and kick a ball. Can.
Literally in the master plan.
Yeah, that's kind of.
I, I know that there's restrictions as far as permanent structure.
Oh, yeah.
Right away. Um, I can give you a better, well-thought-on answer after.
Well, it's loose. I, I, I don't know if there is a wall, you know, because we're pushing the envelope here. But that's what we're getting at. I'm like, why are we even voting on this? We voted on this twenty years ago to have a plane.
Yeah. Well, it's, I mean, it exists. So the only cost, the only budget adjustment would be to take this money and allocate it towards grading.
Well, what I'm getting at is I, this district doesn't need to be the soccer goals. I got a buddy that'll go buy the soccer goals tomorrow and put them out there.
And my only recommendation in providing the soccer goals is that it's perception. It makes this, this committee look like they are doing something for the community. And really, that's the only way to communicate to the community that, hey, this spot is actually available for you to do something on. Otherwise, how are we representing it?
Julie. Yeah, I just want to lean in. Shannon and I have had a lot of discussions on this and Lourdes is, a lot of that is going to come into play a little bit later on, her work that she's done diligently in the Hispanic community and their feedback and their desire to have this, you know, playing field. So right now that money is allocated two ways, three thousand to a grant writer and remaining funds to a consultant. We can bring that on the seventeenth, the ability to be able to work with the numbers and I would just hate to see ninety to a hundred and twenty days go by while we're going through this process on something as simple. And the traction to be able to go to the public, especially the kids that are wanting to play soccer, to be able to just have a formalized invitation on behalf of the district to say, here's a sign, it's the community playing field. Here, here's one of the fields that's being taken care of.
We were kind of jumping ahead a little bit.
But I'm just laying it out so they, they get it. Okay? And an invitation to the public that says, this is your space. And again, Lourdes will lean into that a little bit later on. That's really what is being asked of, is just give us some space, not necessarily even permanent.
Not even good space.
Right, just that.
We don't need this tight, all right?
So I'm just playing Steve for time.
Yeah.
Right? Like this stuff gets so, as I mentioned earlier, we're three years in on the skate park. Uh, it just shouldn't be taking this much time. It, these are not, we're not building a rocket out on the east ranch. So that's my comment.
All right, where are we now?
Manager, that's just two quick phases. I will connect with you on the placing of non-permanent structure that applies to goal, goalposts.
Just, yeah, concrete.
I'm a basketball player. Remind me what.
A goalpost is.
Goalpost, okay.
A goal net, yeah.
Um, I'll find out about that. The second piece is in terms of getting staff reports in and getting it agendized, we're way behind the eight vaults. You can see, uh, any reallocation of these budget monies in August. We would be targeting September.
I, I guess I'm just more concerned about, or was interested in the liability of the district if the community council assembled two goals out there. Right? And put them together.
I don't think that the district has any authority to say you can't play on something that is designated a playing field.
Yeah, so if I took my goal home with me for sure, there's no question, but I was more interested in something larger that the kids knew were there. And we don't need to advertise it. Once the kids hear that there's a soccer goal at the field, they're all going to be there. And it almost doesn't even need to be a playing field initially because they just kicked the ball in the goal a lot. If you go to Shamel Park and you notice the two new trees they planted there, they're using the trees as a goal already. And they go to the side so they get a nice little angle to shorten the goal down. Children are brilliant if you give them the space. Now, I will get back to you.
Okay.
We belabored that enough? We're on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Next.
I have more to be able to labor on that later, so.
Okay, on the next, perfect. All right. That takes us into the, uh, Cambria for Aquatics group discussion. And I'm going to give that over to, um, sorry, I'm blanking right now. Barbara, go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, I'm glad that I'm after you said that you really couldn't talk very much because you talked some, so I can talk.
Yes, we have a half an hour in it. So we're about there. Give you fifteen minutes.
If you're here to talk about or to support the pool, would you raise your hands? Oh, that's good. Okay. I just wanted to say that, that it wasn't deep what we're talking about. This effort to build a pool here is a ten-year-old effort now. Uh, we put a lot into it. We've looked into everything we can look into. And we have some very good news. Very recently, we elected Julie, uh, and talked about the, uh, space we have. And I asked if. Be reasonable and appropriate use for this space. And they said that there was no problem perspective. Um, they said the east ranch is, uh, suitable for a pool. And, um, they, uh, the, the only thing we needed to do was to get a new MOU. Or a MOU with the CCSD to allow that use. Now, to do that, uh, we, it's, the, the, the road is a little bit unclear. But basically what we would do is we would ask today pros, you to, uh. To ask to, to basically fill out a, um, request to the CCSD, write a request to the CCSD. For a, a new MOU or for an MOU with us to proceed. What we are asking for is the use of one acre. And you might say, well, what are you going to do with the pool? We talked about this briefly the last time we were here. But in short, um, this is an unusual resource. Because it would affect every single person in Cambria. Newborn babies who learned early swimming skills, all the way to super seniors who need. Lot, uh, lane walking, uh, need all kinds of, um, other kinds of things that they can't do when their knees are bad. Um, it would allow people to, I, we have a, a project to do swimming lessons for everyone, lap swimming. Uh, we're looking at scuba classes for the kids, talk about really using, um, the property, giving kids the ability to learn those kinds of skills. Um, and I would, it, I mean, it's a, it's a very multipurpose kind of tool. Uh, so what I would like to ask is, um, perhaps some feedback from, if we can have some feedback from the people. Who are here who want this. And, and then if you would please consider. If it is an agenda item, voting to ask the CCSD to, uh, allow us to move forward.
I, I have something else.
Hold on, let's see. Okay, we're going to turn it over to the boards. We have questions from Ms. Gray.
I, I have questions. Alright, Karen, you mentioned an acre. What, 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 how'd you get that space?
I'm sorry, I mentioned.
How did you pick an acre? Why do you need it? You said an acre of ground or?
An acre. Oh, how did we figure it out? We, we looked at the side of the pool. Uh, area for, uh, proper dressing rooms for multigenders and, um. Uh, and an office area, a small office area to, 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 to be there and to be able to work.
Okay. And, and the reason I say that is because I went over and I was looking at maps and trying to allocate. What we have, because I, I need to do a map for another project, but especially on, uh, accommodate the pool. But when I look at our mapping area, we're down to. We actually. I, I made a map and I did on Google and I translated over to printer and it didn't print for, for him. But when I look at the area, we have. A set aside, it is taken up by the dog park. The small playground, two thousand feet, dog park takes thirty-eight thousand square feet. Uh, twelve going through three hundred. Three hundred and fifty, uh, the pool area is. That I could squeeze out of it by pushing back a little on the maintenance compound, because that has moved north of the park. And then they have the water, water and resource options of forty-three thousand, four thousand three hundred.
I can assure you that, that we, um, have looked very, very, very carefully at this particular.
Yes.
Size and place.
And is it usable area? Because what we have, when you take the, the twenty-fourteen plan. And we've looked at, you're, you talked about south of the park area, right? That is sort of got a red line through a lot of it for, for use.
I, I should have brought it today, but, but without people seeing it, it, you know.
I know it's tough.
It, I can guarantee you, I've worked very closely with a member of the CCSD board. And the two of us.
You'd be better off of the northern part where you're, you're closer to the utilities. Your, the sewer line is, is a, is a grabby fault, no lift. And you're tied into the intake of the output of the water. And the electricity that's available in that area, not having to trench all the way across the park for these things. Because you, you are going to have a sewer plant in there or a sewer line. But you, you end up, it's more convenient on the north side. In the south side, it presently is unavailable based on the twenty-fourteen plan. And did, did, you were going to cover this with the county. I believe. And you said, what did you come up with on the county? What did they say? Did they look at the area and say this would work fine?
We went through the, we were with the, the entire planning team. Um, in Bruce Gibson's office, they, we gathered and we talked about it and we showed them the particular location. Uh, I have great confidence in that location, but the MOU would, could be, could be stated in such a way that it allows. Uh, mutual work on that, on that question. And, um, just to, I mean, we obviously want the location to be the best for everybody. And it has to allow for all the necessary uses of that, that area. I believe we have done that, but, but again, by seeking an MOU, you're, you would be, you would be allowing that process to work.
Okay. And what would you have to do for the? The environmental document? Because that sort of voids that area out currently.
There, there's, it, there may be a need to do a, a new EIR. And there may not be, it's unclear to the county. And it's, again, that's something that, that's, that would be part of the process of moving forward with the CCSD. It's, it's, it, it, it takes a little bit of time for those questions to be answered. But your vote to proceed would allow those questions to get fully and properly. Talked about and presented and so that we have a really secure decision.
Planning was pretty clear that it could be. Most likely handled through an addendum and not an entirely new EIR.
Right.
I don't, wait Barbara, I mean, the drawings you showed me were either. Basically west of the dog park or kind of sliding over to the north. I don't know where the south side is.
So I feel like we're talking about minutia.
Thank you.
Well, hold on, we don't even know if a pool can go there. I mean, literally just because Bruce Gibson says a pool can go there, doesn't mean a pool can go there.
And planning.
There's a lot of people that don't think a pool can go there. So that question has to be answered before we decide what kind of bathrooms we're going to have at the pool or what kind of swimming.
But let me be clear, let me be clear.
We are literally. Sitting at a spot where we don't even know, and, and how many people think? When they made that plan twenty years ago, there was not to be one light on that parcel at night. Raise your hand if you know that that's the way it was set up, because that's the way it was set up. So now we're going to put a pool here.
I, I don't think.
You think we're going to answer that question in this room today? We're not.
I do, I, I, I want everyone in this room to know that county planning. Looked at what we had as, as, as an assumption of where the pool could go. And with absolutely no concerns, they said as far as they can see. That that is an acceptable place for the county. So the next step is not to argue among ourselves when. Many of us don't have all of the knowledge we need, but I would say that the next step, if. If you believe the town wants a pool. A pool like this. Um, you also should know that there's a problem with the Shammel Park Pool. And most people don't know this yet, but it is public knowledge. The, the county has put, has, um, told a few people in writing that. Who've been, who've inspired and, um, about what's happening over there. And if you. Look at the Shammel Park area, um, closest to the creek. You can get a front row view of what is happening to North America and how. Are the infrastructure, the, the soil that supports Shammel Park Pool is, is going away. And, and that little walking area near, nearest the creek, near the pool is crumbling. And so the county understands that they might be able to, might want to. Shut down the Shammel Park Pool. And, and the water in that pool that's used for that pool, the maintenance that's used for that pool, those things would be carried over to our pool, which is. Just, uh, absolutely inland and, um, would, uh, that, that would become Cambria's pool. Uh, it would be covered. So, um, if it's really cold out, you can still swim. You can open it up if it's a sunny day. Uh, it would, uh, have hours of operation that would be suitable to, um, to the use of the park and to the neighbors. And, um, it would be. It would be the, the, really the only resource I've heard mentioned, the only recreational resource that would be. Serving people of every age and people of every community. So it also would save lives because we would be teaching all kinds of, of water skills. And when you live near the ocean and all the lakes that are around. Uh, teaching kids how to swim is not just fun, it's essential.
Yeah. Um, I would just like to say that especially on the heels of the months and months we've spent. Um, trying to get the, the disc golf. Course. You know, idea in front of everybody. Um, and the amount of work that we had to do just for that. So I, I can, I can see like the road ahead for the amount of work it has to do for a pool. Obviously, it's going to be substantial. Um, I do see the pool has a lot more support than anything that we propose for the kids or, and a lot more funding probably. Probably a lot more support from county. And I do get what's happening with Shammel that actually used to be a road. On the north side. It's now it's not even hardly a walking path.
Well, if you're looking at, um, order of things. Uh, we have been working very hard for ten years on this.
And I totally agree, but so this group. Um, I would suggest that you come back with some written proposal. That outlines everything that you've. You know, obviously you guys have a timeline. I'm sure you have most of this already in writing. Um, and give us something to vote on. Right now, just hearing it verbally is, is tough to understand. Um, so I think.
I don't think it's, I, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna, uh.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what I can do to get this thing going today. What is it that I can vote on to make people feel good? I support the idea of a pool on the east ranch. Alright, I support that. But that's about the only thing I'm voting on, right? I mean, I'm not voting on an MOU. I'm not voting on all this other stuff because I haven't read it.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Because I support the idea of a pool on the east ranch and I'm with you. Here, here's.
So what you're, so what you're. What you would be asking.
Just to wrap up real quick. Just. Because I want, I want everybody, like, I don't have a, how do I put this? We don't have a dog in a fight into which way we're going with this. But we may have competing interests in terms of how we bring this forward. We are looking at this changing from a commission to a committee.
Right.
Everything that we're talking about today, maybe for not. If we don't come together. And so some of the things that I've heard from a couple of board members. Is we need to outline where all of these things are going to go. In the park plan and how they affect each other. So disc golf, the community park, the soccer, whatever it may be. I think the two groups are going to have to come together if, if this is going to get pushed forward. And guided by a board member, I think everything has to like slow as smooth, smooth as fast. And I think we might need to slow this down a little bit to bring it nice, clear and concise before the board. Any vote or suggestion today. I don't think will carry a lot of weight considering that this is going to change to a committee very shortly. And you're going to be guided by a board member. So while I agree a hundred percent, a lot of work done here and a lot of work done here. I, I don't think it's going to move forward at all. Unless it's very well thought out plan and the two groups working together. Because I have questions from a board member. Uh, you know, where is the rodeo grounds and FNR office going to be located to? Within, within the ranch? How's that? Where's the frisbee, frisbee golf? Where are all the baskets going to be? Like, they're going to want to know every single detail. Where is the pool going to be in relation to the golf? Frisbee golf. I mean, there's going to be a lot of details that they're going to want to see. And I think any recommendation pushed forward today from the commission. May be premature.
Well, can I just? So in order for us to be able to. Um. To, to, to be able to serve the public, that the large number of people who are tired of being put off. Um, I think that this request to ask, propose to say that they believe in the pool. And they believe in the pool there. Somewhere there. If, if, if you don't like the way I've described it, it certainly can be moved. There's plenty of room for all of the activities that people have pitched. It's, it's a large space. It's not me against. Or pool people against anybody. There's plenty of rooms. Um, but I do think that you're asking the board to consider this, then they will have their questions. And, um, at least it moves it ahead. If you're basically saying, in principle, we believe Cambria needs a pool like the Cambrians for Aquatics are building. With private money. And, um. And we ask the CCSD board to consider it. They can give it to a committee. They can bring it out. They, they can do what they want. But I, I would really think that the board at this time should get a crack at the, as part of the plan. They, they planned restrooms. They put them, they're, they're putting in there. So they plan things sometimes without every piece being answered. It's up to them, but I, I, I would like to see it go forward because. Um, it's important that we get going with this.
Alright, I'm going to, I'm going to take public comment right now. Let's go, Julie, bro. Oh, is there Zoom people?
Yeah, we do have Don Howe.
Alright, Don, you've already told him a couple of times, but I'll hear you again.
Oh, thank you. Uh, and. This is a really useful discussion and it's great that everybody has turned out to, to talk. And I'm sure that it would be great to hear. Everybody's opinion, but I want to remind you, this is a Brown Act Committee. And the agenda says that you are only going to discuss this. It, you're not going to consider it, which is Brown Act code for taking a vote. So you're free to discuss it, but any vote that you take would be contrary to the Brown Act. I, I just wanted to advise you that it might aid your discussion. It's really.
Mom called and said, you're not doing it right. Okay, there you go. Good point. Alright, I'm going to take this question.
Sue Nash, I want to commend this group and tell you that you do represent the action. That the children in this town need desperately. The Hispanic community. Has suffered great loss because of the inability to swim, as you know. All of you care about kids. I know. Jim, Steve, Adam, all of you are here because we need our children to have. Instruction in swimming. We need our elderly to be taken care of in that way. And you all have the will. And the ability to communicate and build this. Testament to a new Cambria of cooperation. And the Brown Act was never intended to subvert the will of the people. It is intended to su- support and protect. The will of the people. And you, especially this group, I believe in you so much. And Barbara and. The whole community. There's room for soccer. There's room for playgrounds. There's room for swimming. There's room for theater. There's room for art. And our community thrives with a district that cares for people and has learned how to communicate. So let's use the Brown Act. To ensure that we don't have. Little groups within the voted in people. Making secret plans. With, this is a big public plan. We all support it. And an MOU will come naturally from the communication that you have already shown. So let's go forward and say that you do agree because you represent the people.
Thank you. Alright, anybody else?
Uh, go ahead. I'm Z, they're going to talk about what the. Uh, live here, my kids live here, um, and I know many of you. Um, I just, I want to give a strong urge to consider living.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Dave, can I? Sorry.
No.
Alright, so, uh, I, I've lived here for fourteen years now and that. In that fourteen years, I've seen that, uh, Cambria is a. Medical wasteland in many ways. And we lack a lot of resources that are required to keep our people healthy. Um, I've fought the last few years to bring, uh, two more physicians to this town so that, um, we all have medical care. Quality medical care here in our town that we don't have to travel for. Um, but something like a pool is so much more valuable than a doctor. Um, that, that pool will serve the health of our children, our adults, my patries, of all myself. Um, and most importantly, I really truly believe our, our older population. I take care of a hundred percent geriatric patients at this time. I have patients who travel to Morro Bay to. I take care of a hundred percent geriatric patients at this time, and I have patients who travel to Morro Bay to. Salzburg to do aqua therapy, and it is universally life-changing for them. And most of my patients can't travel a two-hour round trip to move that. But there will come a day in each of your lives, if you're lucky, that pool could change your life. And it's just like to see it. Push forward, if we need to vote and get it on the table that we can start talking about it, let's take that vote. Then we have a lot of people who are ready to put a lot of money into it. We'll pay for this thing ourselves.
There you go, alright, any other comments from the public? Yeah, end on that, end on that one, that was a good one.
I I'm just trying to sum up what I'm hearing today, I think the request from the Cambrian Aquatics is some method to move this. Keep the momentum going, bring it to the board in some fashion. The counter to that was great. Documented, put it in a form that we all can understand and use and share, commonality. Bring it back and then that can be discussed and put forward, I I I agree. That uh, two points, one, Don is correct, as far as what you're telling me, you've done, bless you, Don. And and then. The fact that there's nothing tangible to bring forward to the board is is a bit of an impediment, so. I don't I don't know that you couldn't put together something like that very quickly, I mean, you've got all the data, you've got all the information, you've got all the wishes. Bringing it before this committee in a in a format that they can actually take action on, have it agendaized in a way that they could take an action on it and move forward. All this other stuff is great and it's all good supporting. Infamous for moving forward with a project like this, but without the facts, you you kind of spinning this, so my suggestion would be to bring them.
What what I'm hearing Barbara ask for is just the approval to continue moving forward with the project. Nothing other than that, and I don't understand why any rule would be in the way of that. I mean collectively, the community would support it, so if they need. This group of people sitting at the table to say, yes, keep chewing your fat climbing and doing what needs to be done. I think that's all we're asking, isn't it?
I I think it would be very possible for this body to vote. That it be brought up with the Board of Directors that they, that this body believes Cambria. May benefit, will benefit from the types of uh resources that we are asking to be built to to put. Into the community park. And I don't see how that, whether you call it a straw vote, or that the the board can just say that they. They have a large group of people, they understand how much Cambrians want this, and they'd like the Board of Directors of the CCSD. To consider how to move forward, that does not violate the Brown Act, and it certainly would make a huge part of the community. Believe that the system works.
I would like, just like to see instead of any sort of vote and recommendation of next steps. And next steps being to provide us with the documentation, some sort of proposal, something that we can tangibly hold our hands and read and really get to know the project. And then then look at moving forward with the recommendation to the board. Not against it at all.
Does anybody have a motion?
I have a motion that I think keeps, and then we'll have discussion on the motion, go ahead, definitely keeps within the Brown Act. In that the group is requesting for a land allotment. I recommend that the, that that this board. Allow or enters into MOU for up to one acre of. East Ranch to be dedicated toward a pool. The board is being, this this group is recommending that we allocate one acre of land where it's where it's finding where it's out, we don't know exactly. But that dedication allows them, I would move forward to have a place to make additional investments in engineering or whatever they need. So that's my succinct motion.
I, we have a space problem out there. With that flood plain, you can only build in certain areas with the rest of the restrictions on that have been given down through the environmental document. You can't build a lot of areas. And the issue of one acre, if you tie to one acre. It's not even worth throwing out. I I see ten thousand square feet, that would be really easy to put a pool, but that's only quarter of an acre. But I I have a hard time understanding why you need a full acre for a pool. In an area that's down to. Two thousand feet trying to crowd in a playground, the dog dogs ate it all, so you'd have to move them if you were actually going to do an acre. Uh, the maintenance compound, I've pushed over quite a bit of area, they've got twenty-four thousand square feet, which is a little bit close to what they have. And the Water and Resource Office take up a lot, and those things are on the plan, there's no discussion about it. But the pool coming in is going to be fighting for its space outside of the flood plain. And that's the biggest kicker, it an acre is a lot of land, it's an area that, yes, there's space there, but goes to soccer fields, dog parks. Other areas you can't build in, to carve out a contiguous acre, it's a lot of land, so I would just as soon leave the acre size out of it.
John, add something positive.
I think we're getting in the weeds here on the issue that cannot be adjudicated today. I I I think you have this discussion, fortunately, we've had this discussion for twenty years, actually, of what to do with that space, but I don't think this meeting can. Can really resolve any of that, so I think either, and the Brown Act will allow. An action item added to an agenda, if there's an unforeseen circumstance, which could be a good call.
Well, I would support a motion that says I support the idea of a pool on the East Ranch.
With an action item of providing additional details.
No, I just support the idea of a pool on the East Ranch.
One thing I sense is that there is a perception. That there's only so much room and somebody's going to, it's sort of like playing musical chairs, it's someone's going to get left out with their favorite project. There is enough room on 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 that area for everything I've heard of to date. I I it's it's when you look at, I wish I had brought brought it, I think, it's it's it's, there's a lot of room there. And so this, we should be moving from a sense of plenty, not from a sense of who's going to be left standing. And and I think that that, when you look at the acre, I wish I'd brought it, but if you look at the acre on a plot of that. Of that community park land. It's the 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 one acre for the pool looks looks almost too small, you keep looking at it saying, it's a ball of tanks. It it, I I challenge all of you to look at that small amount one acre is in the total there.
To the Board of Directors to allocate. Space for the pool on the East Ranch.
Yes, there you go. John, John's going to second that, alright, now we're going to have a discussion, I hear there there's a question from the audience.
Yeah, Crosby and Laura Swarge.
Good morning, everybody, this is Laura this time, okay, I just want to backtrack a little bit. You have all of these plans and everything to build a restroom right now that's costing us hundreds of thousands. Now, you don't know where all the other things are going to be, so what are you going to do, build a second bathroom, are we going to move this bathroom? That's my question.
Okay, thank you, alright, back to the motion at hand, we have a motion on the floor, Jim, do you want to state it again?
I move that uh, this committee recommends that is. That the CCSD enter a memo and will understand to allocate some portion of the ranch to a pool.
And I got a second from John on that, you're still comfortable with that, alright, let's take a vote on that. All in favor of Jim's motion, say aye. All against? Shannon, no, so it passes four to one. I hope it has some values. FFRP, are they in it or are they against it?
The beginning of all this stuff basically was 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 within the hands of the FFRP, our people. And they came, they basically defined what the community park was going to be like twenty years ago. Have you had discussions with FFRP people to kind of bring you up to date on the history of?
The Conservation Easement and the Ranch Master Plan define the boundaries for the community park. The boundaries of leave a certain amount of space for anything we're talking about here. The 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 Conservation Easement is held by FFRP, and as long as. The boundaries designated within the easement and the master plan are honored for any planning related to. Construction or whatever is going to happen for the community park. FFRP is neutral on what goes in. FFRP certainly is not interested in in being a part of a new EIR. But that would be an issue that would have to be addressed down the road.
No, I was only only asked a question about, you know, basically the history of why a community park was set up the way it is. So they can understand what happened during that time period, that restricted what was actually there.
Well, there's some, the the master plan and the easement. That many years ago identified a certain of playing field, soccer field and so forth. I I don't think, for example, that frisbee golf even existed then, so I mean, it it the the easement. Does not specify exactly what should go there, it gives examples of what could go there, and that's in the master plan.
Including a community center.
Yeah, yeah, they're all, yeah. FFRP is primarily and literally solely interested in honoring the easement. As it exists, and and certainly. The boundaries, i- i- it's essentially eleven acres, by the way, that's available for more activities. Or more things to be put there.
It it said, then they, the wrestling, the the environmental document. Starts slicing away at that whole acreage. Limitation towards a spare part of, it's not so much we, you can't find it, you can see an acre out there, you just can't get to it. And that's the problem we have, you know, just the frisbee golf, we can't. Almost can't put a crummy little frisbee golf on the side of a hill because it belongs to someone else. That uh, by fault of, by default to the environmental document, so when I say we have a space problem. Like I said, I just took out the areas we have, like the the playground area, the toilet, and and. We're looking for an area, open area for picnic tables, and pretty soon, you know, even, they keep, picnic tables keep moving. All the way down to the uh. Place no one wants to be, and we have plenty of land that no one wants to be, but the access to the parking, to the access to the. Uh, water facility and so forth is highly restricted because. Again, the maintenance areas are starting to move in on the park and occupies that north. And west side, and then east side is pretty well taken, and again, the dog park. Ate it in the revision of two fourteen, I think we need to crack the two fourteen, move that dog park. Further down the way, and then all of a sudden, yes, we have acre, but that's another environmental.
I have tickets to the Dodger game tonight, everybody, so. This is killing me right now, alright, but a good discussion to be had later. Cause the dog park people, they didn't want that thing shoved back in that corner echoing up.
Picnicers don't, only frisbee golf.
Yeah, ah, okay, so good, we're moving on, now we're taking on the frisbee golf. And receive the report that Shannon and Julie have so diligently put together for us, people, thank you.
Okay, well, um, so. After that, this is anticlimactic. We have.
Vote on it and receive it and move it forward, this is.
Very hard. Cavicing the community to find out what kind of active activities they would like to see on the East Ranch, we have. Spent years debating about active activities put on the East Ranch and gotten nowhere, and so we were trying to do something. That we could actually implement, was environmentally low impact, financially feasible, easy to implement. Um, no big deal, of course, it turned into a very big deal, um, it is very hard. To Kermit's, what Kermit's been saying, that the amount of land that we have available to do something as simple as frisbee golf. Has been shaved off considerably by noise restraints, flood plains. The dog park expanded somehow, we we haven't gotten any kind of, we don't know how. Um, encroached into what the, where the picnic area is, now forcing the picnic area further out. So frisbee golf, you know, putting that together has been kind of a a difficult process. However, we did come up with a plan. It's not entirely fleshed out, but we are hoping that you will, if you've read the plan, and that we can take a vote on. Moving forward and presenting this to the CCSD. So we have the background, I think the statement of me is pretty. Pretty self-explanatory, active recreation on a parcel of land that we designated for active recreation. Frisbee golf, we have some people who are willing to donate money, so there's no cost to the community for this. And again, very low environmental impact and extremely economically feasible to put in and maintain. The master plan, it is in alignment with the master plan, we have community feedback in the form of the ad hoc committee going to farmers market for weeks. And asking for community input, we actually have completed signature pages from that. And then we also have the Hispanic community, Laura's went out to the Hispanic community and asked them what they would like to see as far as. Active recreation on the East Ranch, and of course, there's no surprise there, they would like to have a playing field. First and foremost, frisbee golf came in second, so. This proposal is for disc golf, I'm sorry, disc golf, I keep correcting myself and saying frisbee golf, eventually disc golf. This proposal is for disc golf. We still haven't exactly identified where each basket will live. But because we're waiting on the county to come back with information about where we can put the baskets. Um, on the map, so they are actively investigating that right now, we expect to. Information from them, hopefully soon. Let's see. I think we addressed everything with the exception of the exact placement. The budget, which I didn't put in here because the budget will be determined by the exact placement of the tee pads. How we create the tee pads and the baskets, and how many baskets, we're suggesting nine. But it's going to be roughly about twenty-five thousand dollars, and again, no cost to the community, that money is already available. The only other thing that. We probably need to address, and I was hoping Matt would be here for this. And this is kind of a bigger, broader discussion, but maintenance. Maintenance for a frisbee golf course is relatively easy, and typically with all the other frisbee golf courses around the county are handled by. Private groups like pickleball, who come together and maintain it. However, again, maintenance for any of the projects we do for active recommend recreation. Fields, now possibly a pool, frisbee golf, it needs to be addressed on a broader scale. That's a discussion way bigger for this proposal, and so I did not include a plan for maintenance other than. Public or private volunteers, so. And then the timeline, of course, would depend on the information I get back from the county as far as where we can put these. But as long as, we asked about the requirement that we not. We are not allowed to do anything until the bathrooms are in place, and the county has never heard that before, so they are investigating that as well. It could be that we have to wait until the bathroom is in place to put this frisbee golf course in, it could be that we could just put the frisbee golf course in. So I am, I guess, making a motion that we take this proposal that is presented in the packet. And put it in front of the CCSD board.
Second. Any board discussion?
Not necessarily, one thing that. Barbara Gray probably found, and I found when I went to the county, and if you sit there at the county and they look at. The EIR, they look at what the use.
the EIR, they look at what the use is, if it's essentially compliant with what you're gonna, if you're going into a quiet zone and you have a frisbee golf thing and they think that that's certainly compliant with the, the intent of the EIR. You can expand that. The county, their plan that they have written with agreement with the CCSD is far more flexible than the attitude of somebody at farmer's market.
Yes. Any other board? No, hold on. Julie, somebody in here, in the board. I'm gonna turn it over to the public. Kermit?
Well, I was gonna say, we have gone to the county and, uh, they are in the process of reviewing it. But, but, and that, and we have not drawn the final map on the location based on, they're waiting for their recommendations. But we, um, have adequate space outside if it are compliant. So we, we could build it with or without any more restrictions. If it relaxes restrictions, it gets more interesting cause it's entering into the trees. If it doesn't, it's out there on the old end.
So let's start this way. Julie?
I, I just wanna add in, you know, we've spent seven months doing the data to our community, you know, reaching. And asking the community, what is it that you wish to see? And one of the things that came back many, many, many times. And part of the reason why the approach has been a community playing field and potentially disco is many in this community want nothing out there.
Well, three people.
No, there's been a lot.
We've actually collected the data and I definitely wanna caution everybody about presenting quote-unquote data. So, yes, there may be the perception that people would rather see nothing happen, but only three people actually voiced that in our data. So I think that's a huge distinction because, I mean, there's lots of people.
I think if you were on social media platforms as actively as I am on this space. And we need to also look at low impact and be respectful to some of that opinion. I'm a hundred percent behind recreation. You know this. I'm just trying to make sure that we're weighing in on both sides and trying to hear those that are also saying that we love our own face. And, you know, we want to be respectful about how we use it. Um, I've also, you know, spent time speaking with John on this in regards to the EIR and the easements and how those easements have been put in play and why they're there. Um, so personally, and I, I'm just gonna put this, I, I, I have concerns if anything we're doing potentially is looking at opening up the EIR. Because I think that is a whole nother conversation now.
But we're not doing that with this.
No, no, no. I'm just, I'm making a broader statement.
Well, hold on, I'm gonna get to the public in a minute. I lost my thought. Okay, uh, anybody else from the board?
I hope that what this committee does and how it's presented to the board of directors is, is not a single package. It really, i- i- and I'm not speaking for FFRP now, I'm speaking as a resident here. We would be at this another twenty years. If we're going to, uh, at some point go to the board with a comprehensive package with all the things that are possible, I say peel them off. We've already talked about the soccer field. We're talking about this. Take it.
I think peeling them off is the right option.
Right, but that's not what the CCSD is asking of us. So I'm gonna let Matt speak to that right now because that is not the request of CCSD.
That's just a way to, to me to slow the whole thing down.
I just wanna get clarification so that we're successful.
I understand what you're saying in terms of, of peeling them off. But how they affect each other in the overall plan is what I believe the board will be concerned with. Where it's placed, how one affects another. So it just, in a way, it needs to be mapped out where everything is gonna be placed and, and how things are gonna be affected. That, that, that's the input that I've gotten. But again, this, you as a, as a commission that's gonna turn into a committee can push this forward to the board and, and the board can sit there and, and discuss it. And they may come back with more questions. Kick it back down to pros to, to provide those answers. Um, I know that, you know, any plan moving forward, I know Julie is presenting on the seventeenth and she's gonna have a very detailed presentation on, or, or Shannon, I don't know who's presenting, but we'll have a very detailed presentation on disco. That's what the board will wanna see with any.
And, and so that's, that's a recommendation, right?
Yeah.
There's a first and a second on that?
Yeah.
On the plan.
On the plan.
Yeah, so. Yeah. Adolf?
Original question was, I thought when we voted for the bathroom in the ranch, that was basically a requirement by the county in order for us to use it as a community park. So I think we already have that commitment. So I would think that we would not have that, uh, any of the blockages in terms of.
We already have a community park.
All right, so public, go ahead.
I just have one quick question. I'm curious, um, and I am a supporter of this, um, swimming pool. But how many acres are being, um, allocated for the frisbee golf?
It's, uh, it's really, we've drawn an area that would occur, but really since it doesn't occupy any any space, it has a, you know, guys flying frisbees from point A to point B. But nothing interferes with putting anything in there. Uh, frankly, we, we haven't totaled it because it's, uh, goalpost in a launching area.
And we can move the frisbee golf all day long. The frisbee golf isn't gonna stop anything. Yeah, it's just going.
I mean, it's, it's basically, it's active recreation, but other things can be happening at the same time. So it doesn't take, but like the pool will take the footprint. The frisbee golf does not take the footprint of the area.
Laura?
Thank you. First of all, I wanna thank the ad hoc committee, all of the members here, um, for all your diligent work. I am newer, um, to the commission meetings, but specifically wanna thank Julie and Shannon for the work that they've been doing. For asking me, inviting me to help, um, the outreach to the Hispanic community. So I understand everyone has favorite projects. Saw a large number of group lead. I thought that was a little disappointing cause it, we want one project in my, my belief, we should support all of it, be here to listen and take responsibility in an active way for all of it. So that being said, sorry, that's just something that bothered me a little bit. Um, I have my favorite project too. And so my question is, what would hinder us including a playing field as we discussed, very low maintenance, grading, that's it. What would hinder us from including that in your proposal for the frisbee golf?
It's, we already addressed it. I think we're already gonna move forward with seeing if we can reallocate the funds to do that. So it, it doesn't, the, the, we definitely, um, couched it as part of this overall plan and active recreation. But when we did, went through the process identifying the fact that the field already exists. We don't have to ask for a field. It's already there. So basically it's asking for the funds to maintain the field.
I think it'll be quicker going outside of this plan to get that deal, cause I think it's already there.
I, I just have a question about the survey. Uh, I think even seven months of going and asking people at farmer's market does not include enough people in this community. We have a very large community. And I think an actual official survey that's mailed out maybe with a CCSD, uh, bill would address that. We had that many years ago and, and the and I can pull with the second thing. Uh, I mean, I've looked at, at your same data, it says things. Frisbee doesn't even show up nationwide in the top ten.
It is the top. Not, not according to the.
It's the very top.
It's the very top. It's the very top. And it's.
And it would only, and I don't believe it would serve as many people as some of the other projects. But anyway, I would like to see a survey of every resident. I think that that is more, uh, indicative of what we want here.
Thank you. All right, Barbara.
Thank you. A couple of quick things. Um, I saw an analysis that I believe the, this book, books, um, got from an expert. Um, that analysis, uh, did not rate our, that the, the part of the ranch, portion of ranch is particularly good for this golf. Uh, in fact, and that was by someone who was a promoter of this golf. And his analysis, uh, it did not look like it was a very good place for it. I wonder when that analysis will be made public or, or at least.
It's, all right, it's in the board package. Um, and the analysis defines good and green. We have no good. So we took basically the best option that we had available to us. There is no good spot.
Seeing it from a distance.
Yeah, it is in the board package. I included, yeah.
So you, so, so everyone here is, is familiar with what the concerns were by the expert.
It wasn't concerns. It's really the terrain for the best frisbee golf course. You want obstacles. And we're in a position where we have no obstacles. So planting trees would have taken us from orange to green. Which is something that would be great.
Was the, um, the demographics of the sports are, uh, not Cambrian's demographic. And that's why I, I think that, um, that suggestion that there be a, a, um, survey of the whole public before we commit funds would be very, very useful for all of our projects.
So what would Cambrian's demographics entail? Well, I mean, what does not match this? Like, what, what are you saying is the disconnect?
The age range, the, and, and variety thing, I can make that available to you.
So we're slightly, Cambrian's slightly, uh, a little older than the county, but only slightly. I think the biggest demographic in our town are, um, second homes. So actually, when you're talking about like the majority of people that would affect the demographics of our town, it would be the people who own a spare house here.
Well, as a member of the public, I would like to suggest, given all the dialogue and the energy and the work and everything together that the pros committee requests or, or do a, a, a community-wide survey of what activities they want. And instead of, um, you know, the, the small sample size that we get from, from simply doing farmer's markets is not revealed. And I'm willing as a proponent of the pool to take the risk. Uh, uh, but I think that, that instead of I think it's really important that we know what the people we all represent really, and the only way to do it is by getting everything. There's no other way.
Barbara, uh, you're thinking that they, they're conflicted. The pool and the frisbee golf are two entirely different things. And from a financial perspective, there's no cost, virtually no cost.
I think, I think we need to know what people want.
After the pool and this, sure.
I don't see a downside in knowing what people want.
If, if, what is it, what is the fear of this thing proceeding and being implemented that would be bad?
Well, okay, my personal opinion is that, um, everything we do creates a new resource that needs tending, one way or another. It also takes up obviously valuable space, just as the bullwood, just as anything else. So. Um, so if, instead of going willy-nilly, why would this, the steam body not want to just know what Cambrians who live here and pay taxes here and vote here, why wouldn't you wanna know what they want? And I, I've done two surveys.
All right, Barbara, we're gonna have to cut this off, cause there's not gonna be a survey. That's a, that's a pipe dream. We've done that before. That's a no-go. Dick, what do you got?
Just come back to some of Barbara's points was in the frisbee golf, we don't know how it's gonna lay out. Our, my concern is with the Hispanic community. If you ever lived in it, they need a space to go. I have a vision that they can, they, uh, you know, family can come down to the east ranch here. Have picnic tables, they can play on the playing field. I see maybe three little baskets for the golf course. Maybe they're only a few feet apart, but something for the young child to play frisbee golf. We can put another three or four out further out. Nine of them do not have to be together. If I'm just looking for the families to.
We're not encroaching on the playing fields.
But, and they can put in nine holes, break it over the day. All that's involved is an order. You put a sleeve into the ground and you slide the basket. If you can move it, it's for about six hundred dollars a piece. It's a no-brainer. We got private money. We got honey sitting on this side.
Laura?
A hundred and forty surveys in Spanish were completed by Spanish-speaking people. Of those one hundred and forty, this was a grassroots effort. To the tune of having your ASV high school president go door to door, completing the surveys for people. To the tune of me going to all the restaurants, door to door, asking employers pass around these surveys to their employees, which they happily did. A hundred and forty surveys were obtained by me. Of those, twenty percent indicated they wanted the playing field, number one choice. Second was the frisbee golf course. I don't know how much more grassroots we can get there. I'm not speaking for the English. I, I don't, I was not involved in the outreach at the farmer's markets. But I, you know, you were concerned about delaying things. You wanted to see things progress. Now you wanna take steps back, some of you, to survey the whole community. I'm a little confused about that.
All right, we got a motion on the table close to eleven thirty. All right, we're gonna take a vote on it. Jim? I do too.
It was in favor of the.
In favor of moving the, the.
The package forward. Yeah, there you go. All right, and I got a second from, from Kermit, all in favor of moving the frisbee golf forward, say aye. Anybody against it? Boom, done. There you go. David, that was your name? Right on, bro. Welcome to the game. All right, any future agenda items? No need. We don't even know if we're gonna be here.
Yeah.
Soccer is an improved use in a management plan. Um, and easements, uh, we're gonna give him a copy of the community park plan. So really, I like that, but as long as they're not permanent, my suspicion is, is that would not be an issue at the level.
And so we're okay with liability? The district's okay? That's right. Well, I know, yeah. I'll tell him Matt said okay. All right, we're adjourned.